Okay, good yontef everybody. It is wonderful to see you all and it is my particular honor to introduce our teacher this afternoon, Rabbi Dr. Lawrence Hoffman. He is now the Emeritus Professor of Liturgy and Worship at the Hebrew Union College Jewish Institute of Religion. But when I was in school, he was my great teacher. He not only is an expert on the Sidor and all of the rabbinic literature that goes into creating the Sidor, but he's also an extraordinary scholar of contemporary Jewish life. He's one of the rare individuals who has the ability to look at the depth and look into the depth of our tradition and help us apply it to the challenges of American Jewish life today. And so he's someone I have not just called on to help guide me in the construct of worship. He, in fact, was the one who was the architect for the 180th anniversary service that we all enjoyed last spring. But he's someone I've also turned to and our Board of Trustees has turned to to help guide this congregation so that it is best positioned to answer the challenges of contemporary Jewish life. More than anything, he is my friend and I am always honored to be able to share him with my beloved congregation. So please join me in welcoming Rabbi Dr. Lawrence Hoffman. And his theme today, you know it because you chose it, is Why Reform Judaism Matters: A Yom Kippur Retrospective on the Essence of Reform Judaism. Larry Gamar Hatima Tovin.
I come here because of you. I come here because I love this congregation. And I also come here to be introduced so nicely. I mean, after all, thank you very much. This is a great congregation and it's being led by a great rabbi, as you well know. So I thank him for taking time out of what is actually a quite busy day, as you can imagine, to actually introduce me. So thank you very much. My goal today is to talk about Reform Judaism. I've discovered that people don't really think about what it is very much anymore. In fact, there are some people who think, what, do we need denominations? I mean, aren't we past denominational time? I mean, I'm just Jewish. Indeed, if you take the Pew survey, every so often they survey Jews. And what we discover is that often Jews say, well, I'm just Jewish. They don't identify with any movement. I believe that the denomination Reform matters greatly. It means something. It is significant. So today, what I'm going to do is not give you the whole history of Reform. That would be too much. And anyway, history of 150 years ago or so, whatever, I'm worried mathematics. It could be 200 and something, actually, come to think of it. But I'm not going to run through the whole history. I do want to tell you about how it began, a couple of things like that. But mostly, I'm interested in what is Reform? I mean, as a type of Judaism, what's the point of it? And so I want to get below the level of individual historical events and talk about why we are reformed today. What is the position of Reform, not just here in America, but what is it through time? And we'll see that Reform is an attitude that changes through time. But the attitude, because it has to respond to different circumstances. But the attitude towards Judaism and towards the world is what remains constant. And I have this complicated piece of paper that you're holding in your hand. It's a chart, as you can see. Someone said to me, I don't understand a word on it. That's good, I said, because otherwise I would have nothing to say. You could just take it and read it. So it'll help us in what we're doing. If you don't have one of these, I'll put them over here. Can you help yourself, please? Take one of those pieces of paper. Thank you very much. So quickly, quickly, how does Reform begin? Reform Judaism starts at the beginning of the 19th century. Jews had been freed from the ghettos by Napoleon. And Napoleon told them they could stay as long as they were a religion. He wanted to know, if you're a nationality, then what are you going to do here? But if you're like Protestants and Catholics and Jews, if you are a religion, then we have a place for you. And they were very smart, these Jews. They decided, yes, we are a religion. And that's how Judaism became a religion. Until then, we had called ourselves a people. In other words, there's much more to it than religion, and there is today too. But at the time, they had to affirm, we are a religion, most of all. And that meant they had to have divine services. They needed to have a synagogue that kind of looked more or less like this, to the extent that they could afford it. And they wanted to look like what Protestants and Catholics did so they could stay and not be kicked out of the empire by Napoleon. The question was, who would be in charge of this religion? And one of the problems was that the religion of the past tended to be old medieval. Call it medieval Judaism, not orthodoxy, mind you, medieval. And it was run by these rabbis, who by and large were interested in Jewish law. And their usual answer, as it were, to what can we do was no. Now, by contrast, the people of the early 19th century were coming into their own. They were now admitted into Napoleon's empire. Even after Napoleon was gone, they were now part of the French or the German, wherever it was in Europe. They were part of modern society. How could they have a religion that allowed them to have one foot in the world and yet have one foot still back in Judaism? And that was the question that founded Reform. At the first half of the century, the 19th century, really even beyond it, into the later second half, there were no denominations. There were just old time rabbis who believed nothing should change and new rabbis who thought something should change, but disagreed as to how much and what. And in fact, more than the rabbis drove this, laypeople drove it. Very often in Jewish history, laypeople don't have patience with rabbis. And they wanted something to change. So the very earliest synagogues, if you like, that were reformed, were actually run by who said, I'm not going to wait for you to decide that Jewish law allows us to have modern worship. We're just going to do it. Eventually, the rabbis get on board and they say, you know, there's something to this. And now a whole reef of raft of rabbis begin discussing it. And now they take leadership and now Reform begins. But in that period of time, really what we're talking about is a strategy. How can Jews survive in modern life? That's the question. And the issue was only how much can we change, not whether we will. Those who would not change at all mostly are gone. Modern orthodoxy, conservative Judaism, reform Judaism are all part of the response to modernity. How much can we change and what shall we change? Now, that alone is a great story. I'd love to tell you more about the story. But I really want to jump to today and I want to talk about the underlying philosophy of the thing. In a way, all three of those were reformers. Even modern orthodoxy was a reform because they were Jews. We tend to think that modern orthodoxy is a continuation of the Middle Ages, but that is not true. All of the modern denominations are breaks with the Middle Ages. And yet, in attempt to recapture the history and the traditions of Judaism in a new way, we just do it differently. Which is why, to this day, modern orthodox rabbis, conservative rabbis, reform rabbis, reconstructionist rabbis, we get along just fine. We may have trouble with some of the right wingers in Israel who think that none of this was appropriate and wish they could go back to Poland in the 18th century. What then is Reform as an idea beyond that? Let me start by thinking about Jewish history with you. If Jewish history has Jews throughout it, this cannot be the only time, nor Germany the only time in the 19th century. That can't be the only time that we were trying to find our footing in a new kind of world. Yes, that's the first time what we call modernity struck. Modernity has to do with the Enlightenment values of the 18th century, with the discovery of science in the 17th century. But before that, of course, Jews are always moving around. If you go back to Maimonides, for example, in the 12th century. Moses Maimonides was a great philosopher who read Aristotle and who loved Aristotle. And he talked to Muslim philosophers as well. Muslim, Christian, and Jewish philosophers shared a great deal at the time because they were in their own kind of modernity. They were enjoying a very break in the Middle Ages in which thought was important and people actually got along with one another. There were other times too, obviously, not necessarily so happy times. The Crusades, for example, decimated Jews in Germany. What happens when you lose 10%, 20% of your population? Well, you wait, you get up and you end up with a new kind of Judaism because it has to respond to the new thing that's just happened. So I could go through Jewish history and say, look, there are all these different times when we were challenged as to how we could change to meet the moment. Whether it was a happy moment, like the philosophical Middle Ages of Maimonides, or whether it was a terrible time when Jews were almost wiped out by Crusaders. Something had to change. And regularly in the Middle Ages, middle age, I shouldn't say middle aged Jews, right? Middle Ages Judaism met the moment. So now let me draw in the air for you a model. I'd like you to picture a square. And below that, there's another square. One of the squares, the top one, is going to represent society at any given time. And below it is going to represent Judaism. Now imagine a series of these squares, one on top of the other, that stretches through time. Each one represents a new era with a challenge. The top square is the host society. The bottom square is Jews. Now, Jews in the bottom square have developed a kind of Judaism that fits with the sauce society above, right? Now, what happens when you jump 500 or 200 years? And suddenly, the host society is really different. Something's happened to move it to a new era. Jews move with it. Sometimes it's in the same place. Often if not, and I'm going to come to this later, often if not, it has to do with moving. Jews have moved to somewhere. Let's say they had been in Muslim Spain and suddenly Spain becomes Christian. Uh huh, that's a movement, isn't it? Or let's say they have moved to Germany from Italy, which is what happened. Well, that's a movement geographically as well. At any rate, at various times in history, the host society, that top square, changes. Jews from the lower box move with it. What do you do when you find yourself in a totally new society? You're an immigrant. You have to learn the new language. Or you discover that there's a different religion that's running the show now. Or you discover that over there you were persecuted and now you're not. What do you do? There are actually three responses. You're in the lower box, right? That's the Jewish box. One response is to say, we're not going to change no matter what. All the old ways are what we want. That's like taking a deep dive into that lower box and living at the bottom level and paying no attention to society. You wall yourself off from society. You say, this is evil. We want nothing to do with it. We will still have a little ghetto. That is what we call ultra orthodoxy. And there are many examples of that today, as you well know. A second response is you sort of bubble up to the top of your box and you look out at society and you say, hey, this is cool. I like this. To the extent that you actually abandon the lower box and you say, I'll live in society. Who needs this Jewish stuff? That is called assimilation. More Jews have affiliated through history, more Jews, not affiliated, sorry. More Jews have assimilated through history than we ever say. Because the rabbis never talked about them. They were embarrassed by them, so we don't have records. But modern historians rather believe there's a regular movement to assimilation in Catholic Spain, in medieval Germany, and so on. So what's left? What's left is the reform response. Even before there's reform Judaism officially in the 19th century, there is a point of view that is reformed. And that point of view says, we'll stick our head up, see what culture is like, and we'll learn it. And we'll live with it. And we'll kind of make a new arrangement with it. And we will come out with a stronger Judaism, a Judaism that's based on what we really need to carry forward. A Judaism that allows us to get rid of the old stuff that really isn't important anyway. And that is what becomes reform Judaism then in the 19th century. So the 19th century is just the latest rerun of a long series of movements of Jews through history. In each case, three options. You can sink to the bottom and become ultra orthodox in some way and usually, there's no future for you. You're constantly there, but there's no real future in terms of gaining the majority of Jews. Or you can assimilate, in which case we lose those people. We are here because when Jews moved to America, they brought with them the latest example of Jews who said, we want both. One foot in regular society outside, one foot in Judaism. And so when Temple Emanuel was formed in the early days, they had to come, Jews had to come to terms with, what is America? America was nothing like Europe. They left Europe because they had no freedoms. They came here to be free, free to practice Judaism the way they wanted. And then came a variety of different responses. The best example of 19th century response in America is Temple Emanuel. Look, this is the result of what those brave people did at the beginning, investing in Judaism for the future in which you would be fully American and at the same time, fully Jewish. Another example was conservative Judaism. Conservative Judaism didn't really found itself until the Eastern European Jews came, not the German Jews. We are, by and large, descended from German Jews who came in the middle of the 19th century and pioneered Judaism here. Eastern European Jews came, but they had a different kind of Judaism to pioneer because they wanted to join their Judaism from Eastern Europe, which was not Central Europe, and make it American. And that became conservative Judaism. And modern orthodoxy has many strands, but it's always the same question. How can I be fully Jewish and fully, in our case, American? I've talked about movement changes before, all right? And I've talked about now how Judaism is a series of changes. And in each historical moment, we have three options. And one option, the reform option, is to build something like this. But what I just said also, that conservative Judaism and modern orthodoxy are options too. too. And so now I wanna differentiate these three options, but tell you that in all cases, the issue is, how do we respond to a changing time? How do we meet the new moment? Emmanuel had to change. This is not exactly Emmanuel of 30 years ago, 40 years, certainly not 100 years ago. So changes occur here, too. As America changes, and as the, as the demography of Judaism changes, we change too. So I wanna now look at the three options in terms of a chart that will help you, help you understand more deeply what I'm talking about. And then at the end, I'm gonna talk to you about Jewish history once again, and end up talking about what is Jewish history, anyway? How do we fit into Jewish history in a deeper way? So that's where we're going. Any questions so far? Are you with me? Am I clear? I'm Yom Kippur when I'm not eating, and never share I'm talking straight, so, yes. Hold on a second, we only have one mic.
You were saying Jews adapt to society in sort of various, on a continuum, on a continuum. How has interfaith and gay marriage fit into that continuum?
Interfaith and gay marriage, there's a great example. How has interfaith and gay marriage, how has that fit into these changes? At some point in time, at the beginning, Jews were strange to Americans, and we tried to make our worship and our lives look like American lives, so people would accept us. We were so successful that Jews became more and more interested in being Americans and could be full Americans. Once again, we had three options. If we met Jews where they are in the 1980s, 1990s, and beyond, we could say to them, well, you have to be fully Jewish, and never mind, we don't do intermarriages and so on. In which case, more people would assimilate. So eventually Reform Judaism, which always asked the question of, what are the important Jewish values? That's what we keep with us. What are not important, and we can leave behind. Jewish, so it was just a continuation of the supreme values of Judaism, and giving up the idea that it's just wrong to condemn intermarriage. All right, take a look at your chart. Oh, yeah, sorry. I can hear you, I'll repeat for people. Yes. Yes, so your point. Yes, your point. Perfect comment. In other words, to put it into greater context, when the temple was destroyed, we didn't say, oh, without a temple, we're gonna die, we gotta rebuild the temple. We said, well, the important thing is to be able to meet, to worship God, and to be a community. We can do that in synagogues. So all of a sudden, there's a synagogue movement, exactly so. And when Jews moved to Babylonia, Babylonia was not Christian, it was not pagan, it was Zoroastrian. And it was a great, recently, she was, she taught at the, in London, at the London School of Economics, and the London School of Economics became internationally famous, and I met her, became internationally famous, and I met her personally at one point, because I had read her book, and in her book, she talked about something called grid group, about something called grid group analysis. I, I have lived with this, it's analysis. I, I have lived with this, it's profound understand, because they are so serious about what the wrong is. Because rules kind of hem you in, like brickwork, she calls that the grid score. So if you really join the group because you love the rules, you like being where rules matter, you think rules matter most, then you will find a group that really likes rules. As you see on the left-hand side, in our time, Orthodoxual, but they're not strictly Orthodox. And so one of them actually does like davening, and so goes to pray to God. The other guy is an atheist. He's decided there is no God, but he goes anyway. So Schwartz is the guy who goes to pray to God. Levine goes too. And finally, his wife says, then why are you going? You don't believe in davening, you don't believe in prayer, and you don't believe in God. And he says, well, Schwartz goes to talk to God, and I go to talk to Schwartz. Levine loves group. He'll even go to boring services for three hours on a Shabbat morning, because he gets to talk to all the people there. I had an uncle just like that. He belonged to a large synagogue, where nobody knew what he was doing, and he could talk to the other, the boy, he was round about him every Shabbat morning. I don't think he prayed very much, but these were his people. So one way in which a group forms is, it emphasizes group. And it emphasizes maybe not just a local group, but being part of a greater group. Now, it turns out that Eastern European Jews were group-oriented. You may have read the book a long time ago called Life is with People, the Stetl. Not everybody in the Stetl was Orthodox. Some of them were like Tevye the Dairy Man, who did what he had to, but, you know, he, he was becoming modern. And others just liked the fact that there was a community there. So you can have high grid group score, and those tend to be people who are conservative, because they come from Eastern Europe. We'll ignore the, the ideas for a moment. Now I want you just to look at the four quadrants with me. You can have a society, or any group for that matter, which is, take a look at quadrant, run, see it, it's gonna be, it's going to be a high score on group, right, at the far right, but a very low score on grid at the bottom of the chart, right? What are some examples? One example is college roommates. College roommates don't, don't, aren't together because they love following all the rules of the college, believe me. But you know what? They're a group together, like family. They changed, they wear each other's clothes, they tell each other everything. And that's what matters to them, the small group of two or three, depending on how many are in the dorm. It's also a breakaway sect. Throughout Jewish history, or any religious history, if people break away, they tend to be small. They don't follow the rules, because that's why they broke away, they didn't like the rules. So now, what's left? They love each other. The Chavron movement in the 1960s and 70s and 80s, if any of you go back that far, probably not, 90s maybe it was, I'll try to say 2000, so.